Scene is at 6:30, and we have a quorum. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bloomington Common Council to order here on March 26th. Would the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Ruff?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Pete Mount Smith?
Here.
Sally Stasberg?
Here.
Daly?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Anne Desari?
Here.
Great, thank you. I'm going to start the meeting tonight with my historical note of interest. I'm going to talk about gerrymandering tonight because I kind of learned a little historical tidbit about it. I think that we're all familiar with the term used to describe electoral maps that are drawn to highly favor one political party over another. And these districts are frequently drawn in very odd shapes in order to heavily influence outcomes in such a way as to skew representation. And what I learned today was that this term originated when, on this day, March 26th in 1812, satirical cartoonist Elkhana Tisdale published a cartoon in the Boston Gazette of a salamander-shaped district that had been created by then Massachusetts Governor Eldridge Jerry. And Tisdale titled the creature a gerrymander, like a salamander, salamander, only with Jerry in the front. And so that is the term that stuck for manipulated electoral district. And I thought that that was really interesting as kind of a word origin and as something that, of course, does apply broadly everywhere and including in Indiana where Indiana as a state is one of the most gerrymandered states, like it's on that list of the most gerrymandered states. So that was interesting to me. So moving on then to our agenda summation for this evening, we will start with an approval of minutes from November 6th. And I would like to note there was a revision to that sent out this afternoon, so that will be the minutes that we will ultimately approve. We'll then move on to reports, first from council members, then from the mayor and city offices, where we have a report from the Commission on Hispanic and Latina Affairs. Then we will have reports from council committees. I do not believe that we have any of those this evening. And then we'll have our first period of public comment and reports from the public. And members of the public will have up to three minutes to comment on items not on the agenda. After that, we will have some appointments to boards and commissions. And then we'll have three items of legislation for first reading, Ordinance 2025-09 to establish a Public Safety Answering Point Local Income Tax Fund, or PSAP Lit Fund, Appropriation Ordinance 2025-03 to transfer revenue to that new fund that was newly created, and then Ordinance 2025-10 to transfer remaining debt service funds cash balance to the city's general fund. After that, there are no items tonight for second readings or resolutions, and so we will have an additional period of public comment where, once again, members of the public can speak for up to three minutes. As a note, you can only speak at one of those two general areas of public comment, not both of them. We'll have a note on council schedule, and then we'll adjourn. So if we want to move first to the minutes.
I move that the minutes from November 6th, 2024, be adopted as revised. Second?
Thank you. We have a motion and second to approve those minutes. Are there any comments or questions from council members? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Moving on to reports from council members, I'll start on my left with Councilmember Desari.
Thank you. Just a very brief report. I shared this, and I think the more formal report will sort of come in its time, but I shared this at the Budget Committee this afternoon, but we had the first meeting of the Budget Task Force last week and started the process of evaluating what it might look like for us to move towards outcome-based budgeting. We're working on two specific deliverables, and so hope to be able to report back on this in the weeks ahead. But the two specific deliverables, and I would love feedback from any colleagues on other things that you think would be helpful, but one is to establish a clear roadmap, so sort of moving from concept to, you know, step-by-step guide to adoption of outcome-based budgeting. And the second is a sort of guide for city offices in formatting outcomes. And so those are the two outputs right now that we're working on. But if anybody has any other ideas of useful deliverables in the interim, would love to hear it. And with that, no other updates from me.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
First, I wanted to say to the sidewalk committee, I sent out an email today with a bunch of dates if you can. Oh, great. I haven't looked at it since I sent it, but if you could fill that out, and we will schedule a time to have that, our first meeting of 2025, I think it's going to be a good one. And then I wanted to talk about, last week, I went down to Louisville, Kentucky because Jeff Speck was down there doing a presentation on a walkability project he's doing in Nulue, which is a neighborhood just right in downtown Louisville, Kentucky. So he is a nationally famous planner who has written several books, The Walkable City, The Walkable City Rules, among others, and he's done a ton of work. Some of his projects are here in Indiana. He did a Hammond, Indiana downtown plan. He did the Monon Boulevard in Carmel. He did a River District in Elkhart and a street redesign, a street redesign for the network in New Albany, my hometown. So he has a class at Harvard that he offers every now and then, and it is for design professionals, engineers, developers, community leaders, and public officials. It is called The Walkable City, and it's a comprehensive two-day program on the most effective arguments, techniques, and tools for reshaping places in support of walking, biking, and transit. So I just want, I'll send an email to you all, but I just wanted to kind of alert colleagues about that. It's a little expensive, but I think maybe potentially we could get in there if anyone is interested. It is at the end of May. And it is at Harvard, so deals with walking around those neighborhoods as well. So some fun stuff that he said in the presentation that I took notes on, he said, "Since the pandemic, there's less traffic coming through towns, and it's a time that governments and people can really ask themselves, like, for whom do our streets function?" And that we live in a different era now, and it is a really great time to just think about the functionality and who goes where and when. One fun thing he said, it's not fun, "You're 78% more likely to be killed by someone driving a car now than 15 years ago, and a major reason for that is speed." So a good thing that we're already kind of on the lookout for is decreasing speeds in our downtown streets and everything like that. He talks about rebuilding versus restricting, and like rebuilding takes a lot of money, but restricting can mean like putting in bike lanes or pulling a sidewalk off of a street, and it is often cheaper to do that, and you can do it faster than you can do major street redesigns. He talked about a study that finds sharos make streets more dangerous or at a minimum no safer. You know, the sharos are the arrows on the roads that say bikes can be here, people on bikes can be here too, and that there's, I guess, kind of a funny competition that it show us your most unsafe sharos. A fun fact, one of the happiest country in the world, the country with the happiest drivers in the world is the Netherlands, and the Netherlands is also, you know, the country that has a very comprehensive low-stress bike network. So it seems as you make places for everyone to get around in their own space, everyone is happier. There is a PBS Walkable documentary about the Hammond, Indiana project that he did. I haven't watched it, but it seems kind of neat, and maybe I will send that over as well. That's it. Thanks.
So in April, I will be starting my District 6 Councilmember newsletter. Part of the reason that I have decided to pursue this is because when I was campaigning, and now my top two goals are accessibility and transparency. And one of the things that I've noticed about local government is, even if you're in it, it's so hard to find information. And so one of the things that I'll be covering in my newsletter is, you know, what council passed in the past two weeks, what's coming up in the next two weeks, what I'm working on. And then because I want people to feel like we, as a body, and me as an individual, are more approachable, I'll be sharing some fun things that I'm doing to de-stress as well. So if you'd like to subscribe, it's on all my social media under Councilwoman Zulik, but it's also just tinyurl.com/civiczoo. And thank you, Mr. Dave Askins, for suggesting the name.
Councilmember Daly?
Yeah, thank you. I love that, Councilmember Zulik. I'm going to subscribe. I just want to announce that I'm going to have a constituent meeting on April 5th, which is a Saturday, at 11:30 a.m. at the downtown branch of Monroe County Public Library in Room 214, if they approve my request that I put in, which was available. So if it changes, I'll let you know, but it will go up on the website as soon as I get confirmation. I hope to see lots of people there, including people, you don't have to be in my district. If you're not in District 5, come chat with me anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving down to the other end, Councilmember Flaherty?
I'll just briefly highlight that Earth Day is not too far away. It is April 19th, and there is a celebration the city is having on Saturday, April 19th, at Switchyard Park from noon to 4:00. If you go to bloomington.in.gov/sustainability/earthday, you can find out more about it. And so that should be a good time. I think I'm going to share some remarks briefly with the mayor, as well as county council member Peter Iverson. And then there's a whole kind of program to follow. So that kicks off at noon with lots of different prizes, games, things going on. So check it out at the URL I shared.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Ruff?
No more for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, speaking of the environment, there was an excellent environmental writer that I got to meet a couple times named Gerrymander. And he was a former advertising executive that came from the dark side to write some excellent books. I would recommend In the Absences of the Sacred. It's still timely. And in part, it refers to the singularity in warning us of the merger of humans and machines, which, of course, we're about to do. And so it's very timely to read that again. But I wanted to mention the notification that we received some months ago from corporate council that permanent changes in the roadways, stop signs, bike lanes, the closure of Kirkwood, which just occurred, greenways, speed bumps, and so forth, are in the domain of the administration. It's their decision whether to execute that. Ultimately, it's the decision of the city engineer, according to state statute. Now, that is new to me, but apparently that's how they're interpreting the code. And it was left to our discretion in the past, as recently as just a couple of months ago, actually, when we were asked to approve the closure of Kirkwood. But in any case, I would advise that we no longer accept legislation relevant to those closures. It's not our responsibility, according to the administration, and so we shouldn't be assuming it. I'll certainly make comments about it. I'm happy that the Seventh Street stop signs have been re-implemented at a number of crosswalks for pedestrian safety and for the safety of bikers and so forth. But with that interpretation of state statute comes the responsibility of the administration, that it's solely in their discretion and their responsibility of making those changes. And so they will assume that responsibility. I hope the press is paying attention and the public, because it's ultimately up to them. Of course, we're going to be hearing tonight something about our new Transportation Commission and appointment to that. That will just be advisory, just to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
I don't have a report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I also have a short report. I just want to point out that my next constituent meeting will be in April on Saturday, April 19th. Giving plenty of warning right now. I was last year trying to have those on third Saturdays, and so far in 2025, my third Saturdays have been a little bit interesting, just interestingly scheduled, but I'm hoping to get back on that more regular schedule again, starting in April. So April 19th, 11 o'clock, down the hall here in City Hall in McCloskey, just in person. So that wraps up councilmember reports. So now we're moving on to the report from the Commission on Hispanic and Latina Affairs. Who is here to present tonight? Please make your way up and state your name, and thank you very much for being here.
Good evening. Buenas noches. My name is Marlo Libel. I am the Chair of the Commission on Latino-Hispanic Affairs, and we are pleased to have the opportunity tonight to come in front of you, the representatives of the residents of this vibrant community, to present its 2024 annual report. First, I want to recognize the support we have had from the mayor through the Community and Family Resources Department. Our work could not have been accomplished without the dedication and commitment of Mrs. Jimena Martinez, the Latino Outreach Coordinator. Muchas gracias, Jimena. In the last decade, our Latino community has witnessed a significant increase. From the 2020 census, 4,500 individuals identifying as Latino to approximately 7,000 in 2025. This socioeconomic reality requires a concerted effort by private and governmental local organizations to improve the well-being and integration of these individuals and families. It is unavoidable to recognize that the current political environment conspires against this goal. However, the commission is devoted to address and advocate for the needs of the Hispanic and Latino communities within the city. Our commission consists of nine members, two male and six female, one vacant spot. We are very fortunate to have a group of highly competent and devoted community members, seven of which, including myself, are immigrants with personal knowledge and sense of identity to the community we serve. Our focus is to empower the Latino community through advocacy and action. Our ambitious charge is to identify and research key issues affecting the Hispanic and Latino community in Bloomington, and to develop and support solutions in education, health, housing, public safety, to promote Latino history, culture, and the contribution to the community, and to collaborate with local and public agencies. Next slide. In 2024, we have achieved several milestones, especially in the areas of health education and cultural competency. In health, we have identified the less-than-optimal availability of language services, medical interpretation in health services in this community. So we were able to call on the healthcare providers to identify what is going on. What we identified is that even though the health services has a mandatory policy of having Spanish medical interpretation when receiving Medicaid and Medicare funds, this is less than satisfactory. They use agencies with tablets and phones and try to use that to resolve the language barriers. So we were able also to identify young people in training as medical interpreters through an agency in Indianapolis, and we were able to link them to the providers in Bloomington. Ten of them were able to be offering their services, not that they were being hired, but at least we did this connection. In the education, we have received in the commission complaints and even with personal stories from parents relating to the fact that they did not receive enough information regarding requirements to access to higher education in their high school. So we review data from the high school and identify a significant inequity with regards to graduation levels and access to higher education from the high school. We were able to meet with the two vice principals of that school, and by doing so, we were able to advocate for more work with counselors in those schools with regards to information in Spanish being delivered to the parents and better orientation to the students in order to get to the point where they can apply to college. With regard to cultural competency, several activities were done with the community in settings such as the Fall Festival that we co-sponsored with other organizations, and also with some music events where the community was able to participate as well. Next slide. For 2025, we will continue to work in these same areas of focus in education. We are now contacting the schools in our city to offer, first to ask about what we have been hearing about students being absent from school, I mean immigrants, families, students, because of fear of what can happen with their families. So we are contacting the schools and working with them in trying to support the families to not be in that situation and not affecting the performance of the kids. In the Health Subcommittee, we are going to continue to work on the medical interpretation, but also put a lot of emphasis on mental health. And this is, again, associated in part with the fear that we understand is running in the community with regard to potential risk of deportation and the schools and even not going to churches. And this brings a lot of stress and a lot of uncertainty to the community. So we are going to work with regards to that as well. In that regard, we are also going to establish quarterly welcoming town hall sessions where, in Spanish, we are going to relate, to inform the community about the resources that are available here and how they can access that. The last point I'd like to make is with regards to what can we expect from the city council? So there are several points that we understand we would like to ask for your support. First and foremost is when discussing public policy that the immigrant community needs and current situation is taken into account. I mentioned language barriers, but there are a lot of issues related to public safety, for instance, and transportation, issues that specifically for this community, there needs to be a special attention. The other point is with regards to the other commissions in the city. We have commissions, many of them, human rights, recreation, environment. There are several that touch in issues that are pertinent to our community. So we'd like to see a more coordinated communication between the commissions in order to pull together the resources available. On the other hand, we also see opportunities to identify special funding to, for instance, to, I mentioned that we have to work with the private sector, so how do we go about fundraising? So we need resources to do the fundraising. We need also, or we think we could do a better job in offering, for instance, either scholarships or organizing workshops where we provide the community with better resources to defend themselves, in general terms. We have had several anecdotal stories about a way of being treated in housing, you know, by employees, et cetera. So I think that doing a little bit more of being available to this community and being able to talk to them and offer the opportunity to direct their needs to the appropriate With that, I close and thank the council for your time.
Great, thank you very much. Are there questions or comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Desari?
Dr. Libel, thank you so much, first and foremost, for this very fantastic presentation. I was going to ask whether you could send us some of the data specifically about, sorry, I'm not speaking very loudly. Whether you could send us some of the data of disproportionate access, that would be very, very useful. And then secondly, I'd love to follow up with you. I have a lot of ideas on how we might better use resources in the community, for example, at the university, to deal with some of the language barriers, creation of materials, et cetera. So we would love to brainstorm with the commission on how we can do that.
Thank you for that comment. Are there other questions or comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Rallo?
Well, just to follow up there, thanks for the presentation. So when a resident experiences a language barrier, interacting with, say, the city, say they have a need, they call an office, and they have difficulty because of the language barrier, do you have any ideas about how to address that? I mean, it seems, I just bashed AI a few minutes ago, but AI could be your friend in a sense, because there are apps, for instance, that could help in that, in understanding each other, I guess. Do you have any ideas about how to proceed, like other communities that have done work in this that we could adopt?
First, I would like just to make a brief comment in regard to medical interpretation, the different nature of medical interpretation that I mentioned in my report, because this is a specialized kind of interpretation. And that's separate, and I think I mention that because it's a problem. Sometimes not-qualified individuals are doing that, and that is a safety risk for the patient to understand. Secondly, with regard to your question, I have also been asking, at the City Hall, there are not more than one or two persons that speak Spanish. And I think this is another point to be raised. With regard to solutions, of course, there are informing the families or the person With regard to solutions, of course, there are informing the families or the person that they could bring someone with them that could help them. Second, volunteers, we can, you know, mobilize volunteers to translate. With regard to technology, or there are many, many solutions. Some of them are by private companies that could include live translations, and others are machine language translations. And I was going to mention another one, another idea. So the other one, not practically with immediate solution, is to promote the learning of Spanish amongst the City Hall employees with some incentive to do so. That's what occurs to me.
Thank you. Are there other first rounds before we move on to Councilmember Sari again? Go for it, Councilmember Sari.
Thank you again. When you, and la verdad es que debo de preguntar esto en español, la verdad, pero, but when you, when you think about the fact that we have, for the first time now, made some type of a declaration in the United States that we have, that English is our national language, et cetera, do you see that as a threat in any way to the ability? I mean, you talked about how Medicare, for example, is required currently to get translation when necessary. Where does the commission see sort of future needs going in light of policy changes across the United States?
Even though we have not discussed this in the commission, for me, at least personally, it's clear that there is a threat there, that this kind of rules that Medicare and Medicaid has to have mandatory, it's not only for Spanish, we are talking about Spanish, but it's for any language, has to be that service. So yes, most definitely, I think that kind of achievements that have been done in having the US being a more inclusive and more welcoming country for immigrants is threatened.
The size, roughly, if you know, the size of the population in Bloomington, or even Monroe County, but Bloomington residents who don't speak English, do we have some sizing of that? Or maybe, or do we know the amount of people who've reported issues with getting access to translation and medical facilities, et cetera?
No, I cannot give you an exact number, but yeah, we have a lot of stories of people, not only in schools, but in healthcare settings where they have not been able to be served in a satisfactory way. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and the reason I was asking is just, so, exactly, but I'm just trying to size, you know, the type of response that we should be anticipating and, you know, how, what gap we would need to be filling in for, you know, the size of residents. And, you know, my guess is that it's maybe larger than we might think, you know, and so figuring out where, yeah.
If you think that the population has grown from 4,500 in 2020 now, so all this difference are from people that are just arriving in the last five years. So you have a lot of people that are still struggling to get enough English to be able to go around and have the, so that's easy for them to get the information they need to have. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you so much for your report. Does your commission also represent Portuguese-speaking people, the community from Brazil?
I am originally from Brazil, so I am representing, yes, definitely, yes. Yeah, in the larger sense, Latino is related to Latin America, so Brazil is part of Latin America, so yes.
And is there a significant portion of the Latino population in Bloomington, is a significant portion from Brazil or Portuguese-speaking?
Yeah, from my estimate, we have around 150 people that are from Brazil living in Bloomington right now. There is a large proportion of them, of course, related to the university, probably 70, a little bit more, 80. And additionally, you have other people that, yeah, are not related direct or have, are not anymore related to the university.
Thank you.
Report time, if there are further questions, we could extend, but do I see any? Great.
Thank you very much, and I just want to state in the last, like, 30 seconds, just to emphasize again that medical translation and how important it is and how different it is from other translation, for those of you who haven't done that. It's not just about going to the hospital or the doctor, it's also about, say, going to the dentist, which is sometimes, you know, and eye doctors as well, which are sometimes overlooked pieces of healthcare that can be really vitally important and also need translation for those services. And those smaller offices aren't always as set up to manage that, and so it can be really hard to have those sorts of services. That's, in my experience, helping different refugees get some of those services, that can be more complicated almost than dealing with other medical providers. But thank you very much for your work and your presentation.
Moving on, we have reports from council committees. Are there any that I was unaware of before the meeting? I don't see any. We have now then reached our first period of public comment, reports from the public. This is a 20-minute period set aside for these public comments. If you are interested in commenting on an item not on the agenda, please make your way to the podium. You will have up to three minutes, and I ask that you state your name for the record and sign in. Thank you very much for remembering to sign in. And if you are on Zoom, you can either send a chat message to the host saying that you would wish to say something, or you can send a message to the host to be read into the record, or you can raise your hand for acknowledgement if you're on Zoom. But let's go ahead and start here in chambers. Please state your name, and you have up to three minutes.
Hey, my name is Jen Pearl, excuse me, and I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We're a nonprofit that serves all of Monroe County in essentially attracting and growing quality employment for the community. And this evening, I come bearing tidings of job opportunities for the community. The BDC recently was tracking open jobs across the community, and there are currently hundreds of open jobs. I shared with you a printout of the article, but with graduation season upon us, we wanted to make sure that we were spreading the word about this, as well as anybody else who might be in a job transition right now. The leading industries that we have job growth in include healthcare and life sciences, that's everything from IU Health Bloomington Hospital to the Bloomington Regional Rehab Hospital, Cardon, Bloomington Meadows, Cook Medical, Symtra, Novo Nordisk, and Singoda Solutions. We have jobs open in education, both higher ed and K-12, advanced manufacturing, tech and innovation. We have over 50 local companies that are either tech companies or use tech. There's opportunities in entrepreneurship and growth. And then because we're in the catchment area for NSWC Crane, there's opportunities in defense and defense contracting. The article that we published was out in the Herald Times just a couple weeks ago. You can also find it by looking up the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation on LinkedIn or my LinkedIn as well. And we just hope that all of you will help us spread the word about all these great opportunities that we have here for people. And also, I should note with gratitude, that this council has supported the growth of some of these companies in the past, either through incentives or just other policies that have helped their growth. This is the fruit that it is bearing. So thank you for that, and thank you for helping us to spread the word.
Great, thank you very much. Do we have anybody on Zoom right now? Nope, okay, thank you. Okay, let's go ahead. Next in chambers, please state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes. Yeah, I think either one should work.
Hello, hello, okay. My name is Adam Martinez. I'm here to express my disappointment with the special legislative session on March 12th. Some context, March 12th, it's a beautiful spring day, 70 degrees and sunny, the gentle breeze. I could have spent this evening laying in my backyard under the pine trees, listening to the birds. I could have visited my aging parents, dealt with my mom asking why she doesn't have grandkids yet. I could have walked through the park, holding the hand of my loving fiance, but I did not do those things. I, like dozens of other residents, took time out of my day to sit in this cold, harshly-lit auditorium with flickering lights, because I thought the council would be deliberating on an issue I cared about. I thought I could make my voice heard and do my part to make the community better. But on that day, the council voted against introducing these two resolutions. I wasn't allowed to give my opinion, and nor were the other members of the public. We didn't hear from the sponsors, or the mayor, or the planning and transportation department. These resolutions, had they been introduced, would not have required a vote. If there was a vote and they passed, they still would not have changed the UDO. They would have directed the plan commission to begin the process of preparing a proposal to change the UDO, which isn't exactly radical. We're in a housing crisis right now. Rents are skyrocketing, and incoming tariffs are only going to make it worse. But we know what can be done about it, because other cities have done it. If you allow more housing to be built and a larger variety of housing, then the city will become more affordable. Every week we don't do this is another week of single mothers paying half their income in rent. It's another week of a stagnant local economy and another week of our fellow humans sleeping outside on the ground because they can't afford shelter. Doing nothing is a choice, and I ask that you please make a better choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody on Zoom at this time? Okay, thank you. We have another speaker here in chambers. Please state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
My name is Matt Gleason. I'd just like to echo what Adam said and hope that we can get some sort of reform on the agenda, whether that's amendment to the current UDO or some sort of form-based thing I've heard is, you know, an option. But anything is good that improves density and sustainability. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in chambers who would like to make a public comment at this time? And are we still without Zoom comments? I think that means we can move on from the section of the agenda to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments to boards?
From Team C, we have two appointments, reappointing Randy Cassidy to seat C1 and Debra Meyerson to seat C2 of the Redevelopment Commission.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to reappoint Randy Cassidy and Debra Meyerson to the Redevelopment Commission. Are there questions or comments from council members? All those in favor, we don't have to do a roll call vote on this, is that correct? Do we need to do a roll call on this? No, okay. All those in favor of these two reappointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much to Mr. Cassidy and Ms. Meyerson for their service on the Redevelopment Commission. That passes unanimously. I believe we have one more. Councilmember Rosenberg.
Hi, thanks. Interview Committee Team A would like to recommend for the Housing Quality Appeals Board, seat C1, to appoint Brian Warner.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to appoint Brian Warner to the Housing Quality Appeals Board. Are there any questions or comments from council members? All those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you to Brian Warner for his service. And the other part of appointments tonight is our council appointment to the Transportation Commission, and I believe we have a proposal to suspend the rules to deal with this appointment tonight. This is an appointment from somebody within our own body to serve on this commission.
I know that we suspend the rules to allow for the appointment of council representative for the Transportation Commission in the following manner. Each candidate shall require a nomination and seconded by other members. Each candidate may make a brief statement, no more than three minutes, expressing their interest in and/or qualifications for the position. Members may ask questions and discuss the nominations of any seat before a final vote is taken. After discussion, a modified roll call vote will be conducted in which each council member will state the name of their chosen candidate.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for how to format this appointment, and it is a suspension of the rules, so that means it does have to pass with a two-thirds majority, and we can't debate it. We can't debate the motion, though we can ask questions for clarity on the motion. So does anybody have any clarity questions? Okay, seeing none, can we do a roll call vote on the motion to suspend the rules, please? Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules? Because it requires a two-thirds majority. I'm so sorry, everyone. That's okay. I was, okay, let's try that again. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Zule?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Thank you. Great, thank you. That passes unanimously, nine, zero. So in this process then tonight, just to make sure everybody understands, we will take nominations and then members will get some time to state why they would like to serve. We will have questions and discussions. I would like to remind council members that the statements and questions need to be confined to the Transportation Commission appointment and also need to, per Bloomington code, avoid personalities. And then we will vote by name, and this, of course, assumes that there is more than one interested party in serving. So the first step is to have nominations, and I would say that you can nominate yourself or somebody else can nominate you. So does anybody wish to nominate themselves or nominate another council member?
Just nominate himself, I guess.
Councilmember Ruff, is there a second for Councilmember Ruff's nomination, self-nomination?
Second.
All right, Councilmember Ruff is up for consideration. Are there other council members who wish to be considered? Councilmember Flaherty?
Sure. Yeah, I'd also like to self-nominate, thank you.
Second.
Okay, there's a nomination, a second for Councilmember Flaherty. Is there a third council member who wishes to be considered for Transportation Commission? All right, seeing none. Councilmember Ruff or Councilmember Flaherty, do either of you care who goes first? Otherwise, I would just say Councilmember Ruff can go first because he nominated himself first. Does that work for you guys? So.
I'm fine to defer to you if you want. It's your call.
All right, so Councilmember Ruff, you'll have up to three minutes to state why you would like this position. Thank you.
Okay. Back in December, I co-sponsored with Councilmember Rallo legislation to bring the decision-making power on some types of transportation Greenway projects back to the council. And before that meeting, a constituent asked me if maybe it wasn't a waste of time to do that legislation, because why did I think that bringing these projects to council would make any difference in outcomes of these projects, given the makeup of the council? And I told him he was totally missing the point, that controlling outcomes wasn't what I was seeking to influence and promote. I was seeking to influence and promote with that legislation. Rather, I was, it was simply, I was trying to promote the council retaining our power and our role, regardless of the outcomes. And that was the reason I brought forth the legislation. The outcomes, I would respect, as long as decisions were made with adequate and appropriate council involvement and council role. And this is related to, similar to the reason I'd like to serve as the council rep on the new Transportation Commission. I think it's critical that this Transportation Commission, especially in its formative phases, which we're coming into, have a strong and direct council participation by a council member, who's not just well-qualified in terms of requisite transportation experience, but a member who believes in approaching the role as representative of the council as a whole, as laudable as any given intense focus might be, but really seeing it, at least certainly at this point, as really being a representative of the council. So if appointed as council member rep on the Transportation Commission, I would pledge to be in timely and thorough communication with members of the council. And that will include emails to council members whenever called for, regardless of whether there may be concerns that these would violate some transparency statute. It's the only efficient way to communicate, in some cases, with fellow council members. I would be in timely, thorough communication on matters related to TC business, and I'll actively solicit input from all other council members, again, using email if needed, in striving to be a representative of the whole council, to the best of my ability, regardless of my own personal position on given policies and proposals. You know, I believe for this new commission to launch in a way that elicits confidence within the community, will best be served at this time by a council rep who knows, who's known the community as not only well-qualified when it comes to transportation issues, but is also seen as being broadly focused when it comes to those transportation issues. I'm a commuting cyclist here for literally 50 years. I'm an urban dweller here, and hence a frequent pedestrian. I raised two children here, using bicycles and walking for transportation. And I know about, therefore, I know about safety concerns and issues.
Councilmember Ruff, that's your three minutes.
Oh, wow, that was a quick three minutes.
That was a quick three minutes.
I'll just make my summary statement, I just hope my colleagues will support me, and if not, thanks for not creating the extra workload for me, that will obviously be entailed by this commission's work.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. I wanted to have four points, maybe, just overall. First is, just that I've, at various times in my life, been a, used all four main modes of transportation as a primary mode of transportation. I've been a primary transit user to get around for work, and seeing people. I've been a primary automobile user, same with bicycling, as a commuter, and for my daily trips. And now, my primary mode of transportation is walking. I think all those experiences help give me perspective and understand needs within the transportation system. Also, I'm a public policy professional by trade, and also a civil engineer by education, bachelor's degree in civil engineering from the University of Illinois, that I think does help with relevant expertise in this arena. Second is, I'm supportive of this commission, and it's, I think it's a positive step for the city, in terms of how we're approaching transportation policy development and implementation. I believe in it. I helped meaningfully shape it through feedback, first via the Parking Commission, and had substantive changes there, and then, as you know, via a significant and substantive amendment when we considered legislation to adopt. Making sure that we were balancing safety, accessibility, and sustainability as three pillars of our transportation system, and all of them really being needed for complete streets, which our goals have adopted. I think, a third point is, I think continuity, specifically with respect to the Parking Commission, is important, in the first year especially of this commission. There were concerns about the mission being lost, that's why I helped structure changes and requirements for reporting to take that up. I think, having served on the Parking Commission until we dissolved it, there's a continuation of that service that I would see here. Second is the dissolution of the Climate Action and Resilience Committee, in favor of channeling our efforts to implement the Climate Action Plan into more collaborative venues and other spaces. And so I see that here as well. Again, I helped bring amendments that more deeply integrated sustainability and climate action into the commission's purview. The Transportation Section of the Climate Action Plan has 58 actions. Most of them aren't implemented yet, that takes work, we need to be doing it, that's a good place to do it. Fourth is, I think I've demonstrated a willingness to do the work in this space, bringing, in the past, legislation to help center evidence-based policies like leading pedestrian intervals and ped recall into city policy, in our new Signal Retiming Study that's coming soon, advocating for more sidewalk funding, bonding for multi-use paths, a systemic approach, pushing hard for four years now to get a sidewalk master plan, which is finally happening, and still working on future issues, so like accessibility challenges with snow removal, for instance. I think we have, overall, a need to work on our norms with respect to communications between commission appointments. I also serve on the Utility Service Board, and I fully agree with Councilmember Ruff's points about strong communication input among council members, also can commit to that, and want to just note that it's part of a broader system that the Process Committee is working on.
Councilmember Flaherty, I'm sorry, your three minutes are up.
No, that's great, thank you. Thanks also for your consideration, and happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you. Are there questions from council members for our two colleagues about their interests? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I have a question for Councilmember Ruff. How do you reconcile your desire to serve on this commission with your vote against creating the commission?
Yeah. My vote was not against creating the commission at all. My vote was against creating a commission at a time when there was still this confusion about exactly what powers were being conveyed from the existing ordinance, the existing code, related to Title 15, and particularly the powers of the Bike Safety Commission, to creating this, when we still really had, I felt, a significant amount of confusion and uncertainty about, and I still have some confusion and uncertainty about what exactly the council's role is in Title 15. So it wasn't a vote against the commission. I had no problem with combining the commissions, I understood the arguments of efficiency, and that this could be a good thing, but I just, I didn't think, it was fully explained and explored yet at that point.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Well, I guess this is for both, but since Councilmember Ruff just spoke, Councilmember Flaherty, I'm interested in utilizing scarce resources efficiently. Did you support the Hawthorne Weatherstone Greenway? Would you support a similar greenway? And what I mean by that is, similar in terms of proposed need based upon traffic volume, speeds, et cetera, and the public expenditures that were brought to bear in terms of engineering that greenway?
To answer adequately, I need to share a little bit of context, which is kind of the purpose of greenways, which is to create a safe, high-comfort network that creates connectivity throughout our city. And so they're planned as part of a network, and meant to be the alternative to less safe options. I think the Hawthorne Weatherstone Greenway in particular is meant to be an efficient, high-comfort north-south connector, you know, as an alternative to something like Woodlawn, for instance, that would be very hard and expensive to retrofit. And I think that gets to part of your question about stewardship of funds, and my understanding, as somebody who reads a lot about transportation policy, is that greenways and the types of tools used within greenways, mainly traffic calming measures, are an incredibly cost-effective use of public funds, compared to alternatives of creating safe infrastructure on a street like Woodlawn, that's higher volume and difficult to retrofit. So creating a multi-use path along Woodlawn, for instance, would be like creating a multi-use path along High Street, which we've been in the process of doing for years and years and years, but we had to bond for $5 million, and that still wasn't enough, and we're getting matching funds from the MPO. And so I think that illustrates that, yes, I think the Hawthorne Weatherstone Greenway costs something like $700,000, or maybe more. I know both you and Councilmember Ruff have at times spoken unfavorably of that, and believe it's a poor use of funds. I think I have a different perspective, and I think comparing the alternatives of creating safe infrastructure is really relevant for that context. The other piece I'd bring into it is, and it would dictate, or have an impact on how, whether or not I would support a project, is what we adopt as plans. So I noted that, you know, greenways are meant to be part of a transportation system, part of a network, and so we don't make one-off decisions in isolation. You know, the Seventh Street Greenway, in parts, it is a protected bike lane in the higher traffic areas. It also becomes a greenway that extends all the way into, you know, the East Park Ridge neighborhood. And so, the connectivity matters, the plans we adopt matter. If I was opposed to a project, I think what I would seek to do, and what I've recommended the council do in the past, if we were opposed to some aspects of that network and wanted alternatives, is to propose amendments to our plans that establish what that network will be, and what the priority projects will be. So that's kind of my orientation to it, and I think those are the relevant factors. What are the alternatives, and what are their costs? What do our plans say? Have we changed those plans or not? I think those are the factors that would affect whether or not I would support a project moving forward. Actually, one additional point, which is that I think, you know, that project in particular obviously had more public opposition than many others, and I think that is absolutely a factor. I think there were a variety of challenges there, I think we have to keep working on how projects are communicated, who is involved, how we track that, you know. So I think there's always improvements to be made with respect to communication and bringing people along. I do think that's an important piece of the puzzle, and, you know, I think that could be part of a factor in sending something back, so to speak, or recommending that staff take another look at how something is designed. And I know staff has been very attentive to changes, like for instance, in Park Ridge with the greenway there, making changes based on neighborhood input. And so, you know, I think that's a factor too, that would weigh into decision-making with respect to making recommendations on the commission.
Thank you. Yeah, I was about to ask, did you want Councilmember Ruff to answer the same question, or a slightly different one?
Maybe it'll be the same.
Okay.
It's an important one for me.
Yeah, this relates to the legislation I referred to in my opening statement. This was the kind of decision that I felt the process completely failed on, and illustrated why council needed to have more direct decision-making power in these types of projects. That public process alienated people, divided people, really upset a lot of directly impacted people. And so, this idea that, well, it was in the plan, and we keep hearing this, I go to meetings where projects are discussed with the public, and we'll hear, well, this was in the transportation plan approved by the council. Well, in this case, it was a small dotted line on a map, right? That it was going to be built with these diversions and deflections, and large boulders dropped into people's yards, and, you know, $800,000 or more worth of features that vary marginally, arguably, if at all, improved safety, because the route was extremely low traffic, slow speed, extremely safe before. I know, because I live right there, and I am on this all the time. So, you know, I certainly support connectivity, right? That is a low-cost and high-return-on-investment way of using our scarce funds. The connection between Weatherstone and Hawthorne, great. We've made a connectivity increase that makes that much more usable. And we've left the unsafe intersections north of there, while spending hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on bumpouts and features. So, you know, they're only cost-effective, traffic calming, that's only cost-effective in, if it provides significant returns on investment, in terms of safety, and user increases. And I don't see significant user increases there. And the safety bang for the box is not coming from much of what the expenditure was, though the connectivity, I totally support. And I'm aware of projects, other projects around the community, that we could get connectivity without, fairly cheaply, without other, what I think are unnecessarily expensive, marginal, and disruptive features in roadways, that I would be looking hard for these real connectivity options. The, the long and short of it is, it was already safe infrastructure. I would advocate only for using our scarce resources on projects that are very well-vetted with the community, with neighborhoods they most directly impact, and that we can demonstrate where we're really going to get, have reason to believe we're going to get significant safety and use, and mode, and share, increase returns on that investment. And that Hawthorne Weatherstone project is a textbook example of what's wrong, not what's right.
Thank you, Councilmember Ruff. Does that answer your questions, Councilmember Rallo? Wonderful. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, seeing none. If the clerk would please call the roll, and as a reminder, when we vote, we need to indicate the name of the council member who we are supporting. Okay, good. Councilmember Ruff?
Councilmember Ruff?
Rallo?
Ruff.
Piedmont Smith?
Flaherty.
Stossberg?
Flaherty.
Daley?
Councilmember Ruff.
Zulik?
Councilmember Flaherty.
Rosenberg?
Councilmember Flaherty.
Asari?
Ruff.
And Flaherty?
Flaherty.
Well, I would like to thank both Councilmember Ruff and Councilmember Flaherty for being interested in this position, and note that this is the first one in, you know, over a year, where there were actually two people who really wanted to take on a responsibility. So I appreciate that, and then say that Councilmember Flaherty has the position with five votes to Councilmember Ruff's four votes, so. But thank you both, I really appreciate that there was such interest in this position. So, moving on to our legislation for first reading.
I move that Ordinance 2025-09 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to read Ordinance 2025-09 by title and synopsis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-09 to establish the Public Safety Answering Point Local Income Tax PSAP-Lit Fund. The synopsis is as follows. "Ordinance 2025-09 establishes the Public Safety Answering Point Local Income Tax Fund to ensure that revenue from the PSAP-Lit is separately maintained and used exclusively for the Joint City-County Dispatch Center as required by Indiana law."
Thank you. That ordinance will be heard next week on April 2nd.
I move that appropriation Ordinance 2025-03 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to read Appropriation Ordinance 2025-03 by title and synopsis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation Ordinance 2025-03 to transfer revenue and appropriations from the PS-Lit Fund to the PSAP-Lit Fund. The synopsis is as follows. "Appropriation Ordinance 2025-03 authorizes the transfer of revenue and appropriations related to dispatch operations from the Public Safety Local Income Tax Fund to the newly-established Public Safety Answering Point Local Income Tax Fund."
Thank you very much. That ordinance will also be heard next week on April 2nd.
I move that Ordinance 2025-10 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded for Ordinance 2025-10 to be read by title and synopsis only. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-10, an ordinance transferring remaining debt service funds cash balance to the City's General Fund. The synopsis is as follows. "Ordinance 2025-10 authorizes the transfer of remaining funds from a dormant debt service fund to the City's General Fund in accordance with Indiana Code 36185B2 and 36185.1, ensuring compliance with state law and proper financial management."
Great, thank you very much. That will also be heard next week on April 2nd. And that does it for first readings. We have no... that does it for first readings. We have no second readings or resolutions this evening, so we've moved on to our final period of public comment. So a maximum of 25 minutes is set aside for this section. If there's anybody in chambers who is interested in making a public comment, please make your way to the podium. You will have up to three minutes, and if there's anybody on Zoom, please raise your hand or send a chat message to the host. I don't see anybody moving in chambers, so we'll give just a minute for anybody to make their wishes known online. Any hands raised yet? No hands raised. Okay, and I still don't see anybody moving here in chambers, so I guess we do not have additional public comment for this evening. Regarding council schedule, I would like to call a special, oh my gosh, a special session for Wednesday, April 30th at 6:30. We discussed this at our last meeting. That session is for the purpose of discussing and hopefully approving a document from the Special Fiscal Committee that will synthesize and prioritize budget priorities that we will discuss at our deliberation session on April 9th. So at our last meeting, y'all told me that April 30th was the preferred day for that over April 23rd. So, I'm sorry, what was that? Okay. So, that session will be Wednesday, April 30th at 6:30 here in chambers. And unless there are other notes about council schedule, we are adjourned. Thank you.